Be on the computer screen. I can take screenshots.
Y'all ready?
Ready.
Ready?
Ready.
Staff, ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close out our workshop that started at 4:30. We were in executive session, but we have nothing to report from executive session. So I adjourned the workshop at 4:30. Now, we're gonna call to order a city council meeting for July 22nd, 2025. Please stand for the invocation and pledge led by Councilmember Kent McKinney.
Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather this evening to address some real important businesses we tackle or issues that we've had lately. I want to thank, thank you for, especially for the city staff, first responders. Really, the whole city staff had to pitch in and do extra work. Dalton, our city manager, I guess special mention is his extra effort, long hours, and providing really sound leadership to the whole team here in town. Also, the state of Texas was fabulous in helping us from the Texas Division of Emergency Management, DPS, the Texas Parks and Wildlife Division with their game wardens. Even the Cajun Navy came in and too, too many groups to really begin to name them all. We see your hand at work in assistance for getting with material, with financial aid, and this spiritual help. But please keep in mind all of those who have lost loved ones and possessions. It's an especially difficult time for them. Give us strength and guidance as we rebuild and rebuild better our community. We have a long way to go and we'll need your assistance. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McKinney? Mr. Kunius does not have any announcements of community interest today, so does any council member have an announcement of community interest? No?
I don't know if this is appropriate to say tonight, but with everybody that's been here helping and doing what they can for our community. There's a group that was here and it's the civilian crisis response team. And one of their team members that was down here went home and passed away suddenly. And it was a canine. So I just wanted to say...
Of course.
I want to say thank you to Roxy and her end to watch was 7/17/2025.
Thank you. To everyone assembled, we are a little more casual this evening, wearing casual clothes in honor of Jeff's birthday this week. And amid all the tragedy and all, all the destruction, it's important also to remember to celebrate. So happy birthday, Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Visitor citizens forum. Do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, sir. We have two.
All right, let's do the...
Glenn Andrew.
Mr. Andrew.
Glenn Andrew, 3553 Lacombry. You have on your desk an extended version of what I'm about to share. The July 4th flood of epic proportions has cast a pall of pervasive sadness over our tranquil Guadalupe River Valley. But I sense points of light, points of hope. That's in, hope is the necessary ingredient for successful recovery and rebuilding. Our community is refusing to yield to the angry waters. Why do they have this hope? The thousand points of light offering us hope and recovery by the people who came from near and far just to help Texans in any manner they could. Our community's gratitude to these and to many others is immeasurable and will never cease. But many of the points of light and reason I have hope are sitting in this room tonight. The Curville city staff, you have been exemplary, leading the efforts of rescuing, recovering, reporting, developing future plans, all the while keeping our city operating. Whether visible or behind the scenes, you operated without boundaries. The city's first responders have been heroes without boundaries. The K-Pub team has determined, in their determined actions to restore power to the entire flooded area was astounding, all for the Curville community. To those five individuals behind the city council desk, none of you when standing for election imagined in your wildest fears the July 4th event. We don't control those events. We react and recover from them. In a sentence, you four city council members have been leaders. We consider role models. You have been in too many but necessary meetings. Your community has been hugged by you in the Flower Memorial. You have directed traffic at the ELC. You have shared words laden with emotion, and you have cared for our community's furry friends. You have endured unfair darts, but you always demonstrated professional, insightful, and deeply caring leadership without boundaries. Thanks is sharp for what you, or you are due, but I know I speak for the entire Curville community when I say we are so blessed to have the four of you sitting behind those chairs in that desk. Mayor. Your leadership since early July 4th has and continues to be superlative. I am not one who believes in predestination, but I do believe that our God raises up and empowers leaders when disasters occur. You're the best, most skilled individual, the one who has been perfected to be our leader at this time. You lead with strength, empathy, and vision, but your main leadership is the love for the Curville community. No one loves our community more than Mayor Joe. We've heard and felt your words when they were difficult to say, which captured your pain, your love, and your faith. Please pray for our community. We have heard your stern yet professionally livered words saying, "This is our town, and that's not how we act in the Curville community." Your words and actions share our pain, but it also gives us hope, Joe. Mayor, you've been the leader of the Curville community, and we are truly blessed to have you answering to the title of mayor. Thanks be to God for Mayor Joe, the Curville City Council, our staff, and the thousand points of hope. We will recover. We will be the Curville community again. And y'all, five, and the staff are some of the most important points of hope that will lead us back. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Paul Mitchell.
Mitchell?
Glenn, thank you. Thank you, brother. Thank you. My name's Paul Mitchell, 1300 Barberan Street, and I wish I didn't have to follow that. But I too am here to express a sentiment of gratitude and hope. And Mayor, you ended the last session quoting Rogers. Well, I'm gonna quote a different Rogers, Dr. Adrian Rogers, great preacher of the last century. He said, "Doesn't take much size to criticize." Well, I'm not here to criticize. I want to exhort and encourage you, along with this brother here, to express a sentiment of gratitude, first of all. And that's for each and every one of you, elected officials, all the elected officials. We, as a community, are grateful for you and what you're doing and how you're doing it. A tremendous expression of humility and compassion. Thank you. We're grateful for the local individual volunteers, the businesses, and the churches. Staggering. It's awesome what they're doing. There's plenty of water. There's plenty of food. Plenty of shelter. That's an awesome thing to be able to say in a time like this. Lot of disasters in other parts of this country where they didn't get anything, didn't have anything. We have it, and it's a lot to be grateful for. I saw a church that had a posting taking no more donations. The gym was full of water, and people wanting to bring more. Lot to be grateful for. Grateful for the state and federal resources, the helicopters. I was able to deal with a gentleman. He said, "I'm tired of the helicopters. They, they, they're bothering me. They hurt me." It just reminds me. I said, "No, we gotta be grateful for them. What if we didn't have them?" But the helicopters and all of the state and federal resources that have come to our aid, it's a lot to be grateful for. I, I can't, you know, get my mind around how all of the non-local volunteers, they didn't vet us, they didn't judge us, they just came running in. Just come running in. A lot to be grateful for. Sexily staggering. Now, what are we hoping for? This is, as a community, what we're hoping for. To be able to say if and when, and it's likely it will, that this gourds, this river will flood again. We want to be able to say that we endure that without the immense loss of life. That's what we're hoping for. Wouldn't be realistic to hope that it never floods. At least, we can't see that now. But we can hope of getting to a place where we know it's gonna flood. If it does flood, we don't experience the immense casualties that we did this time. I don't think we're far from connecting those dots. I believe that can happen, and I know many are already working on it. We can employ the technology and hit that advancing high bar, and that's what I want to encourage you guys and exhort you guys in. It's incumbent upon you to see that those above you and on up the line don't forget, and that we get that technology, that we get those things in places. It's incumbent on our elected leaders to get that done, and it's incumbent on individuals like myself to press you. May God, may Yahweh bless you and keep you, and cause his face to shine upon you. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
And that's the end of the citizen speakers.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items are considered routine and can be approved in one motion unless a council member, staff, or member of the public asks for separate consideration of an item. Council? Staff? Public? All right, entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Passage unanimously. Item 4A, Resolution Number 20, 25, sorry, 20, 2025, concerning the transfer of ownership of funds from the city of Curville to the city of Curville Employee Benefit Trust. Ms. Meismer?
Sir. Okay, just a shorter version of what we went through at the 4 o'clock meeting. City core and voluntary benefits are core benefits. That's the benefits that the city contributes to the cost of these benefits. It's medical, dental, life, and accidental death and dismemberment, and long-term disability. The voluntary benefits, where there's no city contribution to the benefits, is vision, supplemental life, and AD&amp;D, short-term disability, Aflac, and massive emergency medical transport. For our benefit budget, the total estimated cost of benefits is $12,576 per employee per year. Our budget is $12,900. It's more than what we estimate because the medical bids were based on 322 employees, dental on 321, life, AD&amp;D, and long-term disability bids based on 323 employees. We're budgeting for 347 employees, and if we are ever fully staffed, we will need funding to pay the city portion of the benefits selected by the employee. In addition, changes in coverage cannot be predicted. We'd also like, or asking the council to authorize the use of the employee benefit reserve if needed to pay for any overages. So the council action tonight is due to the action taken by the trustees of the city of Curville Employee Benefit Trust to approve the FY 2026 employee benefit plans, rates, and funding. Staff recommends council adopt Resolution Number 20-2025, authorizing the transfer of the ownership of funds from the city of Curville to the city of Curville Employee Benefit Trust to pay for employee-related group benefits for FY 2026.
Any questions for Ms. Meismer? We did have a workshop on this earlier, so we had a series of questions at that time. Is there a motion then on this transfer of funds?
I'm making a motion? Oh, go ahead. Go ahead. Your turn.
I did the last one. Anyway, I would move to approve Resolution Number 20-2025.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Passage unanimously. Item 4B, Resolution Number 21, 2025, the resolution authorizing the Kerr County tax assessor to calculate voter approval tax rate in a manner provided for a special taxing unit.
Mayor, we do have four citizen speakers signed up.
After the presentation, we'll get to the speakers. Ann?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, hot topic tonight, I'm gonna try to give this to you the best that I can, in as simple a way as I can. Bob Reeves, the Kerr County Tax Assessor Collector is here as well. If you need any other information regarding this resolution, but I do want to make it clear, we're not here to discuss proposing or setting a tax rate. So I want to make that clear before we get into this, and so if you'll indulge me to walk through this presentation with you, then I can answer any specific questions that you have after that. So, information about the resolutions. Section 26042 of the Texas Tax Code basically says that when there is a disaster, the tax assessor collector who calculates our tax rate, as you know, during our budget process can calculate the voter approval rate at 8% over the no new revenue rate instead of 3.5%. I know this gets very complicated, and people love it when I talk about property tax in budget presentations, so I won't get too deep into calculation, but basically what this means is that currently, the tax assessor calculates our tax rate, our no new revenue and our voter approval rates, based on Senate Bill 2, which basically says that our voter approval rate for the MNO portion of our taxes cannot be more than 3.5% over the calculation of the new revenue rate. So that's kind of in simple form. What this resolution does is direct him by, according to state law, to calculate that rate for us also at an 8%, which is allowable under the disaster rate within the code. So this resolution is just directing him to calculate that so that we have the information as we start talking more about budget and how that's gonna impact us. We're not proposing a tax rate. You're not taking any action on a tax rate whatsoever. Without this directive from council, then the tax assessor collector cannot calculate this at the 8%. He has to calculate it under SP 2, which is at the 3.5% that we typically see. So budget and tax rating process, budget and tax setting process is gonna continue as normal. So I know we've pushed one of our budget workshops just because of the flood, and I think none of us were really in the right frame of mind to be doing a budget workshop in that week, so we'll be doing that on the 29th. It's a little bit later than we would like to, although we have had one budget workshop already and lots of discussions about this. So we can't even consider a tax rate until the calculation is done. So we talk a lot about deadlines and those kind of things, and so this is normal process for tax rate setting. And that tax rate calculation is the basis for our, our budget. So why are we gonna do this? Really, it's extra due diligence for council. So it's gonna let you review a disaster rate during the budget process, see how that impacts the budget, and really consider a rate that's necessary to generate revenue for recovery efforts. So this is not something that we're saying we should go and do this, we shouldn't go do this. It just gives us a mechanism to look at what that looks like. Other notes, just for clarification, it's too early for us to estimate damage or loss to city property or infrastructure, and we talked about this a lot in workshop. We talked about recovery actions, so I won't go through those again, but remember that not everything that we do will be reimbursable, and it will be potentially several years before we see any reimbursement to this. It's too early for us to estimate a proposed tax rate. I did talk to KerrCAD, and they are planning on certifying, so we won't see that until the 25th of September at that time. Then Bob will start his calculation process, and we'll go through the scenarios that we usually do. And we'll be bringing you multiple scenarios, as always, based on if-then situations with multiple different scenarios for tax rates to consider when we talk to you on the 29th. And as always, we'll bring you impact to homeowners based on various scenarios that we bring. I think it's also important to point out that property owners can apply for exemptions. So for someone who had damaged property, I know that it's been circulating a little bit, you know, about taxing people on losses, but they do have an exemption process. So for people who have losses, they can apply for that exemption, and that is prorated based on the time that the governor declared the disaster, and so those are available online at KerrCAD, and I believe on Kerr County's website. I don't, we got to turn on that, but, but they're on KerrCAD's website. So basically, this is just a mechanism for us to do a little more due diligence as we're talking about the tax rate. So, of course, I'll take any questions that you might have, but I have the action that we're requesting here, and that's to just approve Resolution 2021-25, authorizing the Kerr County Tax Assessor Collector to calculate the voter approval rate at 8% when calculating the rate for the 2025 tax year. And I am happy to answer any questions. Bob is also here and would be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Reeves, do you have any comments, sir?
Mayor, council, I'm only here to answer any questions. This is just a tool in the tool belt. As Ms. Barron said, it's not setting a tax rate. It's just providing you with the information to do your business.
Any questions for Mr. Reeves or Ms. Barron?
If we don't pass this resolution, we do not have the option to do anything other than the 3.5.
That is correct.
But if we do pass the option, we still have the option for 3.5.
The resolution...
It's just showing you additional scenario, but I can't give it to you without the authorization.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Then it would have to be approved by the community?
We're, we're gonna get to public comment in just a minute, okay?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Any other questions for Mr. Reeves or Ms. Barron? All right. Now for public comment. Look, if you want to get up and talk about tax rates, please do. Please do. But we're not setting a tax rate tonight. We're talking about getting information from the tax assessor collector on possible scenarios. I pay taxes. Everyone here pays taxes. I don't want my taxes to go up. Also, I didn't want a flood to come down the river and kill 120 people. Okay? We're trying to figure out how to pay, how to rebuild critical infrastructure in our community. We don't even have an estimate of the total expenses we're facing. I guarantee you, we will be transparent and discuss every step of the way. It's prudent, in my opinion, and we haven't voted, in my single opinion, it's prudent to have the information for us so we can make a more informed decision. Does that mean we're gonna change the tax rate? No, it doesn't. But if the evidence suggests that's the most prudent course for our community, I'll be paying more taxes next year. We all will. We'll all be pitching in to help rebuild our community. And with that said, who are our speakers that have signed up?
Yes, sir. Garrett Baxley.
Garrett? If you wouldn't mind stating your name, and if you're comfortable, your address for the record.
Yeah. Garrett Baxley, 1082 Bluebonnet. I just want to say thank you to councilmen, councilwomen, and Mr. Joe, Mayor Joe, for letting us in here and listening to us. As I was just thinking about what I might say, I don't want to bring anything about flood victims. I know y'all are, your hearts are inclined toward them. And as somebody who doesn't do this very often, a few things just come to mind quickly. I love Curville, and I think there's a difference between liking and loving, and that difference to me is that I want to raise a family here, and I want to also bring family and friends here. And I know the same is true for many of my other extended family. We love it. We love it here. And unfortunately, and I know you've clarified this, that there's no action being taken yet, but if the taxes were to go up to 8%, it would be very difficult to love Curville in the way that, that I want other people to love it. And so I'm afraid that that would be the same for many more people of my generation, people my age who want to love Curville but wouldn't have the option to. And I would, I would just hope that things would stay the way that they are, obviously before the flood. And so I would just urge, if there's any action that might be taken later down the road, that y'all would look for a, a middle ground that hopefully would not make it hard for people my age and our families who want to stay here. And thank you for your time.
You did well. I was once your age. I raised my family here. I hear what you're saying, so thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Ian Doherty.
Ian Doherty. That guy on your shirt, I met him the other day.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, I wish I could have as well, but I understand. My name is Ian Doherty. I live 115 Plaids Drive at the Lakeside Apartments. I was about two blocks, literally, away from the river. And I was one of the very lucky few that didn't get touched, and that is simply a blessing of God, period. You know, God had His hand definitely upon this community, and still does have His hand upon this community. There are many people around here, and I thank each and every single one of them that are putting their time, their lives on hold to be able to help out people that they don't even necessarily know, but they still care about. And not just Texans, but people around the country, and even somewhere around the world that have come here to be able to help Curville out because they understand what's going on. It's one of those things where you don't quite understand it until it actually happens to you. And I think a lot of people here in Curville do finally understand, understand that, unfortunately. And the reason I'm here today is because of this, and I understand, as you said, nobody wants things like that. Nobody wants their taxes to go up. Nobody wants, for instance, as you said, nobody wanted the flood to come. But we also do need to take action to address the situations as they are. And I understand you have to have the information to be able to make an informed decision. I agree with that 100%. The one thing I do need to make sure that people understand is that, just like what happened with the commissioner's court, the public came out and made a point of pointing all this information out that may happen, may not happen, but they made a point to point it out, and the world took notice. Remember what we do here today, what you do here today, won't just affect Curville, will affect this entire country, and you will be under a spotlight. You will be under a magnifying glass because people will look into each and every nook and cranny about what is going on. And I understand that it was not exactly the best time to be able to do certain things before, and I think that's one of the reasons that the commissioner's court got so much blowback, because they did it at a very inappropriate time. because they did it at a very inappropriate time. Waiting might have been a better idea. But you still got to understand, people are gonna look at everything, everything you do, everything you don't do. And people are starting to look at, now that things have started to get a little bit better and time has passed, people are gonna start looking at accountability. So, everyone here needs to make sure that they understand that, and this is the court of public opinion, whether y'all like it or not. And y'all are gonna be on blast. Y'all are gonna be on every single social media account, probably in the country, if not the world. So, remember what you do here and do the right thing. And the people of Kerrville need to know every single detail when it's happening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George Burdi?
Mr. Burdi.
Hello? George Burdi, 1616 Glen Road. Hello. So, let me clarify a couple of things, and one, I'm gonna ask Mr. Reeves to clarify me, not in my time, but, you know, afterwards. One is this notion that you're not taking any action tonight. We all understand, technically speaking, no tax rates are being set and all that. However, the only reason to take the action that you're taking is to set the stage for the ability to do so. I would argue that you don't need to do that, and we'll get to that. The, the other is, the potential increase, you actually can get this information, it's really simple to figure it out. The increase, the cap of increase is not about the rate, it's about the revenue that you're able to collect over what you collected last year. And this is where Mr. Reeves can correct me if I'm wrong. But what you're choosing to do is look at the possibility of collecting eight percent more than you collected last year. That comes to about $600,000 based on last year. So, you can loosely get that number. In my view, $600,000 is not worth the bad optics of raising the tax cap on a community already in distress, especially since the fund balance, which y'all are fully aware, is already well in excess of the policy standard and is designed to be a cash flow emergency fund. It's already approximately $2.5 million above what it needs to be by policy. The better alternative, in my estimation, would be if you're gonna get $600,000 out of somewhere, the first place would be out of the fund balance, and you don't have to change any taxes to do that. Further, the impact of a tax increase on a community with such a large frozen tax population means any increase in tax revenue hits the working families doubly hard. As an example, council of five people, three of you, I believe, are in the frozen tax rate. That means the, the dollar that's raised, instead of being split five ways, is split two ways. That, that's just a microcosm of what's gonna happen in the community. Again, 600,000, not worth the effort of the bad optics. Also, this situation highlights the reason it is never, in my estimation, under any circumstances, advisable to rebate or exempt property taxes as an incentive or otherwise. As has been stated here many times, property tax is not profit to the government, it is fee paid for services. So, under, under collecting is nothing more than underfunding the budget you create. I suspect someone in the city actually finally snapped to understand that, as the Whiskey Springs Development Agreement with its $1 million of tax rebates is conspicuously not on the agenda tonight. Obviously, the optics of raising the cap in order to raise taxes on the community is, while at the same time diverting millions of dollars of future property tax to a developer over 40 years, does not look good and will not sit well with this community, I wouldn't Again, the, the main thing is to focus the attention on not the increase in the rate because that gets confusing. Just focus it on the amount of revenue you're gonna collect by doing this arguably unnecessary act. So, please just consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nathaniel Hall?
Mr. Hall?
Howdy, y'all. I want to thank y'all first off for your leadership in this very unprecedented disaster. And it's Nathaniel Hall, 175 Prime Lane. And really, where I know, like you specified, we're not specifying the exact rate increase, but I wanted to encourage y'all, as the gentleman before me said, to not even take this action to consider it, because as a young person, the way this will affect me, even though I don't own a home, is rents go up, and it makes it that much harder for me to own a home someday and raise a family, which I have every intention of trying to do here in Kerrville. I know we've been decimated, and y'all are in a tight position, but I just really, really encourage y'all to try and find another way outside of a tax increase. Any budgetary adjustments, or like the gentleman said before me, lots of great suggestions. So, I would just really encourage y'all to please not do this tax increase, it'll really hurt the young people in this community. Thank you.
Anybody else?
That's the end of the citizen speakers.
I vaguely remember being a young person, it was some time ago. Look, even if we authorize the calculation, we're not required to do the full eight percent, you know? We're just finding out what the revenue is, and if it turns out to be not, not sufficient, I'm sure we're gonna, we're gonna see that. The thing about this is, George Burdi has been on City Council before, I'm looking around, Glenn Andrews has been on City Council before, I'm trying to see who else here has been on City Council before. Truth is, none of us have ever been here before. We've never had a natural disaster of this magnitude to deal with. What we're asking for tonight, if the council approves it, is information. That's all we're looking for. And we'll be very transparent about all those discussions, and if you can't attend the meetings, they'll be on YouTube, you can watch them at your leisure. But the truth is, we're driving down a road that doesn't have any, have any signs on it, doesn't have any lane markings, it doesn't have any shoulders, we've never been here before. And in my opinion, and I may be the only one that feels this way, having information as we try to process the cost of this community is preferable to not having information. That's my opinion. We will have a budget workshop next week, I believe that's a Tuesday. We should have had it earlier, but flood intervened. I guarantee to every person in this room, we will do our best. None of us up here want to, we don't live to raise taxes, I mean, it sounds like we do, but, no, we want to provide services to the citizens of Kerrville in an efficient and transparent manner. That's what we want to do, and that's what we're gonna work to do at our budget workshop next week. We have a resolution before us, and if there's a, anybody wants to make a comment or make a motion, I'd be happy to entertain it. Comments? There a motion then?
I move that we approve Resolution Number 21-2025, authorizing the Kerr County Tax Assessor and Collector to calculate the voter approval rate at the eight percent.
There a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. Keep an eye on us, we have a budget process next week.
What time is that meeting, by the way?
I don't know. When is that meeting?
Let me look. I think it has to be.
Three o'clock? Three, three to five?
Is it three o'clock?
Three o'clock.
Okay, good.
And you can, and you can see it online, too, if you can't be here. Again, this is, this is uncharted territory for us. Item 4C, reconciliation of executed contract, change order for the Calotheater roof. Mr. Burrow.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm gonna wait a little bit as people transition out.
Billy, you like the motion while you talk?
If, if you want to hear me, I can yell a little bit louder.
I can hear you, go right ahead.
So, what we have before you is the Calotheater project, and we're, as a department, we're trying to move forward. There, there's a lot of other stuff going on in the city. Our contractors are still, you know, working to, to build, you know, better build the community that we've already been progressing forward with. Now, this is not part of the rebuild project, this is just part of our progressive movement. So, in 2023, EIC and Council agreed to the sales tax, you know, sales revenue bonds, this was part of the project. The Calotheater HVAC and River Innovation Project was commenced earlier this year. When we took this to Council, we had a, an action that was taken for the base bid plus a deductive alternate, approximately $62,000. There was project oversight, and we actually constructed the project with the roof, which was the deductive alternate, in the base bid. So, what we're asking is kind of a two-part here before you tonight. One of them doesn't need action because we just need authorization from you to move forward, and that's the reconciliation of that, that amount. The contractor did the base bid amount, we have the money for that. And the second part of this is a change order. So, once we started peeling back the layers, we noticed that there was a lot of damage, which we anticipated, that's why we had a little bit more in the budget. We had some contingency within our, you know, project budget to account for structural components, water damage, and is actually a little bit less than what we anticipated. So, with that, we also got some pricing from Guido as our general contractor for Playhouse 2000, some upgraded maintenance items that, you know, they, they don't have a whole lot of fund balance within their system to account for the, the full needs of what they had. We did have some project budget. So, before you is a change order, that's a culmination of the damages that we incurred through the 2017 hailstorm, the 21 snowstorm. But in addition to some just routine maintenance items, upgrading the fire retardant on the drapes, for example. Another component is the fire suppression system, where as soon as we got above grid in the, in the auditorium, we found some sprinklers that, you know, were, were covered up, and so we've got to get those back open. You know, this was, you know, a couple of weeks that have gone by since we did this. So, the contractor, contractor is still progressing forward. We are still looking at a mid-August completion for Playhouse 2000 to come in and do a few more things that, that they had on their schedule, still getting a final completion and back open to the public in, you know, in September, early October, for them to, you know, get all their fall and, you know, and winter activities where we get a little bit more interest. So, again, the, the action before you is really just the authorization of the change order, but we're asking you to reconcile just so we can make a contract execution, or a change order execution.
Any questions for Mr. Burrow?
Okay, so the narrative in here has a different price of $2,999, but on your breakout itemized sheet, it's $3,119. So, I just want to make sure.
So, that's the revised with this, with the authorization. If you look at the, the top, the original contract amount is a $2,999. So, again, that, that is the executed contract amount. So, the first part of this was reconciliation to get to that so we can authorize a change order, because the, the council action was that 62 less. So, in order to, you know, to bring a change order before you, I can't bring one that's, the contract is $2,99.
Right.
You know, there's, there's nothing to do with that.
Yeah, okay.
But yes, the, the executed change order would take this $0.11.
Are there questions or comments?
You're still well under budget here, aren't you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And, and this is also with the revisions that we made to the funding agreement for the pool, so we're still under everything.
I love it when y'all say under budget, I don't know why. Any other questions?
Somebody else behind me does, too.
Any questions?
Mayor, I will move for the approval of the executed contract amount and the authorization of the city manager to execute change order number one.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. Item 5A, shall I use this one from you, or?
Sure. So, we have one vacancy on the Kerrville Recovery Community Coalition, and we have one applicant.
All right, who are the, who are the, I'm sorry.
I have that.
Please, go ahead.
Lamar Davis has made an application, he has good experience in the recovery community, and I would move to nominate Lamar Davis to be on the board.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next item is an executive session item, I'm gonna need a motion for us to go into a brief executive session.
I make a motion to an executive session, present it to Section 551.004.
074.
074, excuse me.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, so vote. All right, we'll reassess up to executive session and come back down and close out the meeting. Are there any items, we have nothing to report from executive session, are there any items for future agendas? Yes?
Not yet.
No? No? Because we're gonna have full agendas, so that's great.
Yep.
Hearing none, I adjourn the meeting at 7:43.
All right.